Okay, I'd like to call the Board of Trustees meeting to order on Tuesday, December 10th, at 6:05 PM. Roll call, please.
Lino?
Here.
Abstair?
Here.
Scathagood?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Clover?
Here.
Duffy?
Here.
And Solomon? Here. Approval of minutes as published. I'll make that motion.
I will second.
Any additions, corrections, deletions? Other issues? Paul and David?
Aye.
Comments and correspondence. Couple of comments first, if you have any noisemakers in your pockets, please turn them off or silence them. Thank you. Next, I wanted to introduce Laddie Chapman. Laddie is our videographer for this evening. And Laddie, if you'd care to introduce yourself or say anything, that would be great.
Do I have to come in front of the camera?
You can.
I'm Laddie Chapman, I'm the program director of the public access TV station in Sebastopol, which you may even be subscribed to, and we're recording this put on that TV station also on YouTube. If you contact Janelle, she'll tell you the links to it and other information.
And the idea will be that sometime in the near future, it will be on a website link. So you could go on Sister Bay website, and there'll be a link there to go direct to YouTube, and you can look at the proceedings. We're looking at this as pilot program, as one of the ways to increase our communication to our constituents, taxpayers, and other interested parties.
And it's charter channel 986.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondence.
Yes, sir, I have a number of items as well, which has not been included in your packet. I just received it today as the hot topic in Sister Bay that everyone would like to know, which is what is going on with construction. I can bring you up to speed on that, it was a letter from the engineer. We had a meeting with DOR and the engineering firm this afternoon. As a product of that meeting, the engineering firm went back and issued a letter detailing how construction is going, took up a rest from here on out. Due to the, what I understand to be unseasonably cold weather we are having, in Wisconsin, the contractors having some challenges in dealing with the soils and materials they have to go through. As a consequence, they will not be working this week, they will come back and they will work next week to complete things out up through December the 20th. They will pull out the week of Christmas and not come back until an anticipated restart date of March 31. I did inquire of them as to what would trigger them coming back, if they would come back earlier, and they said what they would look for is at least two solid weeks of sustained temperatures above 30 degrees. But March 31st is there.
That could be June.
So what are the road conditions going to look like in the meantime? How's this going to impact businesses? Paige Funkhauser brought something to speak to that meeting, that businesses have been impacted as a result of construction, and so we're going to try to mitigate those impacts as much as possible. They will be placing gravel down to be level with the pavement everywhere they have broken the pavement up. They will be pulling all of their heavy equipment out, all of the associated construction items such as manhole castings and shoring boxes, all of that will come out. We have submitted a plan, which the engineer sent off to DOT for approval, and I'll be issuing this press release out to the public following confirmation on this. Essentially, what we're going to go to is two-way traffic out on Bay Shore, so northbound and southbound lanes will be mostly open. On the part that is gravel, if you're looking at the center line, and to my right is the gravel section, they will relocate barricade barrels 14 feet from the center line, so it won't quite be the full width of the lane there, however, that will permit travel in both directions. Parking will be permitted everywhere that you see pavement on that direction of travel. So, for example, down in front of Al Johnson's, parking will be permitted on the opposite side of the street, the park side of the street. That's the long and the short of it. Snow plowing will be a challenge, and we've addressed that at parks, but that's what they've communicated to us at this point.
Okay. Was the, how about the letter from the town? The topic, correspondence or anything? No?
When they said they're coming back on the 31st, 31st of March, or around the end of March, is that to pave, or is that to put more sewer in?
That will be to complete what has been done on sewer. What their, the original scheduled work that was submitted was to have the mains completed by the end of December. That is not going to happen now because of the weather that's taking place. So they're going to have to come back and finish up what they've missed out on and are unable to complete with three crews running in the next week in the spring, and then they'll do the lateral and paving at that time as well.
Okay. Any other correspondence?
Yes, sir. Look in your packets, we received a few letters of thanks, one of which being from Miss Diane McDonald, in appreciation of a generous donation of $50 in memory of art.
Waller-Binstein.
Thanks.
If I could, if I could make a quick comment on that, my dad went on one of these to see the memorial, and with an honor flight, he was better than Bulge, and it meant a lot.
Yes, sir.
It really does, so.
Good. Okay, second item of correspondence, another letter of appreciation for a donation made. This is from Eloise Linden, the Sister Bay Historical Society. The final piece of correspondence that we received is one that we have addressed previously through a letter to Representative Gary Bies, and this is with regard to the Tourism Zone Commission essentially letting us know what the impact is going to be on a community-by-community basis. They've included a chart here of what that dollar impact is. In conversation, the way that they propose that it will occur is that the 3% will come out of the Tourism Zone Commission's share of revenue, not the municipality's share of revenue.
You mean the 4%? There's a 4%, and there's a 3%, it's 7% total.
I apologize.
The 4% is a marketing fee that goes back to the Tourism Zone Commission. The 3% is what the innkeepers or property owners that are collecting the room tax are allowed to keep now and not turn in for a fee for collecting the money to start with. My understanding is that Tourism Zone said that they'll return the 4% back to the municipalities, but as the law is currently written, it's not allowed. So they reflect the 3% here, it could be as much as 7%.
That is correct.
Any other correspondence?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody in the audience care to make a comment about a non-agenda item? New business items, consider a motion to adopt Resolution 276-121013, recognizing the service of Mike Walker. Motion by Lino.
Second.
Let me read the resolution that you're talking about signing. Expression of thanks and appreciation to Michael J. Walker. Whereas Michael J. Walker, who has retired, served as a municipal valuer, i.e. assessor, for the village of Sister Bay for over 30 years. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Sister Bay assemble this 10th day of December 2013, in their own right and on behalf of all citizens of the village, thus hereby extending Michael J. Walker our sincere thanks and appreciation for a job well done. We wish you the best of luck in all your future endeavors. And we also have a nice plaque that also reflects that.
Nice.
So if there's no objection, I hope we will get a unanimous vote.
Aye.
We will present this. Mike, would you please come forward? Do this for the camera back here. You have to turn around so you can see your lovely face. Congratulations in retirement. Thanks very much for all your hard work.
Thank you. I very much appreciate this. I was thinking on the way over here that I have been, have been the assessor in the village of Sister Bay for exactly half my life. I'm 72, and I started when I was 36. So it's, there's been a lot of changes, and what you might think in this occupation is that there's a lot of people that don't like what you do, and I would kind of emphasize the opposite. In the Marine Corps, we used to say there's almost 10% that don't get the word. I would liken that to a similar percentage in this job, and I appreciate very much your appreciation, and thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're certainly welcome to stay for the next three hours, too, if you'd like.
Perhaps if your agenda was a little more exciting.
We're talking about raising evaluations in the town of Liberty Grove.
They already raised the lottery.
As chairman of the Highway Committee of Liberty Grove, I'm kind of back in the spotlight.
All right, item number two, update on special projects, i.e. beach, pavilion, and Bay Shore.
Okay, so taking these in order, and just a quick recap on the beach, JJR is going to be working to resolve what may be some of the apparent reasons why the bids came in as high as they did on the beach. This will be a relet for bids around the June timeframe for construction to commence next fall, so the park will not be substantially impacted this summer, just to communicate that out to you all. As for the pavilion, the bids came in a little bit higher than we had anticipated.
Again, in the second month?
Yes, the low bidder was 412,000, apparent low bidder, I should say. We have a meeting with the donors by teleconference to talk about some of those things, coming up very shortly on Friday. As for the Bay Shore Drive project, I hope that what I just explained will suffice there in terms of the traffic flow.
On the beach project?
Yes, sir.
Have we written JJR a letter, as David suggested the last time, about asking, and you know, kind of a firm letter about why they were so far off on their bids?
Yes, sir, that is something that Mr. Cuffin had taken care of.
Yeah, good. We're also trying to work with DNR, and we've got a couple of letters, working with them also. There's an upcoming meeting, you may or may not know about, next Friday, down in the Green Bay office.
Okay.
So we'll discuss that.
Okay.
It's actually being set up through Washington Township.
Okay.
Washington Township. Anything else, the update?
That's it.
Any other questions on the update?
So, I do have a question on the updates. The pavilion, if we do accept a bid, if the donors say okay, what would that look like as far as construction would happen this summer still?
The construction would need to be substantially completed before the end of May.
Okay.
If we could resolve the financing issues and pull the trigger, that's what that would look like. There would most probably be some remediation efforts in and around that construction site, largely due to restoration of grass in that area, so a portion of it would probably need to be cordoned off to allow that grass to really flourish.
Probably similar to what we did at the Al Johnson property, we took down the gift stop, the gift store. Took a little while, but by midsummer, we could pretty much use it.
Shane, I think it's also going to be largely dependent on the weather as well. You know, if we get a really, really cold spring, then grass doesn't get going, it puts us later back getting that done.
Okay, now, just to clarify, you said that no work will be done on the beach project until fall?
That's correct.
Okay.
I should give one more caveat on the pavilion project. The engineering conversation with the subs on the electrical components of this, found that the bids were coming in much, much higher than what the engineering firm was estimating, something on the order of $125,000 adjusted to the electrical, and there is no reason to substantiate bids anywhere near that order of magnitude, and so he did an amendment to the RFP instructing them to substitute an amount of $42,000 for the, for the electrical work. So they all contained a flat dollar amount for that. That's one of the issues that has to be resolved, and they're working to resolve that amount.
Now, how can you set a $42,000 electrical limit? Are you going to sub that out? Is the builder or the donor going to?
They would then go out and seek additional.
Separate bids, just the electrical.
Just the electrical, under a separate contract.
And the thinking is, it's actually would be less than 42,000. If the 42 is what will be plugged in, they sub it out, somebody comes in at 32, then we, then you back that up.
Yeah.
Consider a motion to adopt Resolution 274-111213, approving community fees for utility through processing.
So this is something that came out of the utility committee in order to accept electronic payment methods, and have a third-party company handle that. Utility committee recommended, if you look at your sheets, option B. What option B does is allow us to accept those payments that doesn't get into e-billing, so some of the bells and whistles that could come along with an electronic payment system aren't incorporated in this. This is a way sort of to wet our feet into it. The fiscal impact to the utility will be $160.40 split on a 50/50 basis between water and wastewater collection. Essentially, this is an optional thing, you can continue to pay your bill the way that you have paid your bill in the past, by check. If you are going to initiate a bank draft or pay by credit card, you will now have the option to pay by credit card, however, there will be a fee associated with that. If you will look on the backside of that second sheet, you will see those fees. Please disregard the statement there that says fees paid to the village by customer for paper billing. The proposed billing fee of a dollar, that was not adopted by committee.
Correct.
Okay. The e-checks and e-savings, dollar per transaction, that's essentially like a bank draft that we do now, that's the fee for that company to process that. Credit cards and debit cards are charged in additional 2.75%, plus 50 cents for the transaction if it's less than $100.
How much, how much money is, will come from the customers as a result of this charge that I have now?
It would really be impossible to calculate it without knowing what the usage basis is.
Well, how many people now use the e-check or the ACH draft?
Approximately 200.
Okay, so 200 times four, $800. Well, minimum $800.
Yes.
So if you pay electronically online, and the bank sends a check, you're going to charge an extra dollar now?
Yes, sir.
To the person who's doing it?
Yes, sir.
But the extra dollar won't come to the utility?
No, it goes to the processing company.
It goes to the company that provides the service.
Doesn't, in all my years of business representing companies, they, I voted against any of this stuff because it's a handling fee. It's for, the privilege of doing business with me, you're going to charge me, okay? For the privilege of doing business with the utilities, you're going to charge me, you know, to pay by credit card or to pay by electronic bank thing. Now, if you need that fee, you know, what I always advised when I was in sales was, you know, incorporate it in your billing somewhere, but don't call it a handling fee because it flies in the face of your customer. You know, that, you know, this is like an ATM fee to a bank. You know, I go to the bank, and you're going to charge me a dollar to get my own money out of the bank account. And that flies in the face of the consumer, so I think you're better served by, if you're going to do it, incorporate it into your pricing and leave it status quo.
I have a question. Within the minutes for the utility meeting when this item was discussed, in the minutes I read something about the Public Service Commission, made a comment that this should be included in the cost of the service and not a separate charge. Did I read that wrong?
This was, this issue was discussed at two separate utility meetings, and at the first meeting, there, there was consideration of charging customers, I think that the committee at that, at that first meeting were leaning toward option, is it A? Is it called A?
Yes, the full service.
The full service. And then there was discussion about what happens with customers who don't want to use that and would prefer to continue with the old system, and so there was some talk about charging them then, if they didn't want to use the new system, that they would be charged for what Martha does now.
Paper billing.
For paper billing. And so Martha checked with the PSC about whether that would be permissible and it would not be.
So when we go through, so. I thought the essence of the first meeting, and I wasn't at the last utility meeting, the essence of the first meeting was an all or nothing, either we use this system or we don't, and then basically we roll that. That's where the rolling it into the fees came up. Basically, we have to raise the prices to cover the cost of these transactions, but there's no other option. You can't go down and hand us cash, you use this system. And I don't know where it progressed in the second meeting, but that was the essence of the first meeting, and that's why that talk was there.
So let me ask a different question from a different approach. Does it cost us less to use an electronic ACH withdrawal from a customer's account? Or does it cost us more to get a paper transaction where they send us a check?
That depends on if you want to include the cost of preparing a paper.
Well, of course.
Okay, then.
That's the true cost.
My understanding is, the true cost is most expensive under the current solution or situation where the card gets touched, per Martha, seven or, six or seven, eight times, plus the cost of the printing and the card and the postage and the check processing, that any of these would be cheaper, which was my, I was the one that brought up the idea of, hey, we should help, this should be seen as a, and it is, it would be, a service to the customers if they can go online at any time, see their usage compared to last year, be able to pay the bill at their convenience whenever they want it, however they want it. And if you're not on board with moving ahead, and you want the more expensive route, there's a $1 fee to cover our costs.
I mean, usually that's the way it goes. I mean, to me, this sounds like we're going in the opposite direction. We're charging the people who are making it less expensive and easier to do, money so that we can continue an old system that cost us more and would continue to cost us more going into the future.
I.
And when I get, a company calls me or sends me information, they say, if you want monthly billing statements, we're not going to charge you a dollar a month for that, or if you do it online and pay your bill online, there's no charge to you. I mean, to me, that sounds the way it should be going, not perpetuating a more expensive way to do it and charging people who are costing you less more.
I agree with everything you're saying.
The PSC has the paper billing built into their rates. All of it is the cost of doing business. All of it is, you know, when you talk about Martha handling the, the card seven or eight times, that's the cost of doing business. If you're going to operate your utility and you have labor, and that happens to be your billing method, that goes under your cost of your business, okay? To put that burden on the taxpayer, to say, well, we want to reduce her time, and we're going to charge you for the privilege of doing business with, which is a monopoly, so they have no alternative to go somewhere else, is, you know why? It's the cost of doing business. Why are you putting your cost of the business on our taxpayer?
I can tell you that my insurance company, my bank, and several of my other vendors, if I wanted paper, do that. And my insurance company is $5 a month.
Yeah, that's why they're so well-perceived in the public.
No, I'm fine with that.
What is Liberty Grove and the Sanitary District going to do?
They don't know yet.
Yeah, that's.
They don't know what they're going to do.
I'm actually very surprised that it went this direction. After the talks that we had a month ago, I'm, I'm, I wish I was there, because I, I don't know how it went that direction, because it really does, it seems very backwards to what, what the whole goal of an e-payment system is. It's to remove the front-end labor, I guess, the back-room labor, out of the system, so you can save that money, also save your payer's money, and it's kind of a wash. And I don't know how it got to that direction.
And the customer gets more service because they can actually go online, pay it when they want, see what's going on.
Yeah.
Available anytime.
Shane, the option A would not have, the one we discussed at the first meeting would not have saved the customer money because they would be paying a fee to pay their bill online.
Well. But the offset was Martha's cost of touching that card seven to eight times, plus the printing, plus this, that would be.
So in other words, we would look to adjust, you know, hopefully keep the rates the same, but adjust labor to offset the increase, shift the labor cost to processing cost, while providing our customer a benefit.
And the utility would pay those processing costs and not the customer?
That would be.
Well, that wasn't, that wasn't part of that discussion.
Okay.
So, as I see it, at the moment, we have three options. One, we can make a motion and approve it. Two, you can make a motion and disapprove it. Three, you could refer it back to the utility committee to relook at it based on how the consensus appears to be, but.
I would be in favor of number three, but so that I could take a strong opinion to that next meeting, it would be beneficial in my mind to, even if it's a show of hands or whatever else, see how many people are on board with that third option of trying to move us in the direction where we're not charging our customers more, but internally we need to figure out a way to absorb the fees.
As a board, I want to take a vote.
You do, or you do not?
Do not.
Okay.
Show of hands is a vote.
Okay.
Okay, without a motion. However, if you're looking for a consensus, I believe the consensus would be, and somebody could certainly object if they chose to, the consensus would be to send it back to the utility committee to relook at it.
I would agree with that.
I would agree.
Okay.
I don't see any heads going this way, so.
Okay, so I could say that I saw no opposition or strong opinion for the third option. I believe where I'm going to get resistance is from somebody not here. Is the best way to put it.
Okay.
Okay, happy to take it back.
Unless you want, if you want. I have one other question.
If you want a straight-up and down vote, we can make the motion and do it that way, too.
No, 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 that's fine.
In that way, it still ends up going back to committee.
Yeah, no, 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 just so that they, someone doesn't think this is me saying, hey.
You'll be able to direct them to a YouTube site.
I think it'd be nice to take a vote. I think it'd be nice to take a vote, because then it's a consensus among the board.
Can I ask a question before we do, though?
We don't like it.
Because I, I'm, I think the cost shifting is obviously what businesses do, you know, you've got a cost of good, a cost of doing business, and you're going to move it from labor to the E, but where, who pays Martha and who's covering the E? Is, are these two, I mean, are we?
Utilities and utilities.
Utilities and utilities pick up.
Utilities is paying Martha, utilities is paying the E.
That was, so it's.
I guess what we're talking about is a labor offset of $160 in absolute terms, $160.40, meaning you could.
That's a year.
No, option A would be.
What about the?
I'm talking about option B, which is what the committee recommended as a annual cost. If you think about it in, I guess, an apples-to-apples comparison, we're going to be out $160.40 if we go with this, so to make everything flush out in the end, we would need to reduce Martha's.
Well, you might be out more than that.
Let me rephrase that.
The question I asked was, the $800 you're expecting the customer to pay would be added to that, so you're talking $960.
Yes.
What you're doing is trying to offset your, your cost to the customer, is what you're doing.
One of the things, John, is when you look at rates, the federal government publishes guidelines for what rates should be if you're going to tap into federal money, and that's 1.5% of median household income. Our rates are substantially lower than that. We would need to charge.
Are you worried that we've gone up to about 35, 40 percent?
I know, I know. But believe it or not, we're lower than.
You were substantially lower than comparable municipalities, which is a good thing, but to be at the market rate to where you could start tapping federal money for a 5,000-gallon residential customer, you would need to be at $41.53 before you could act. residential customer, you would need to be at $41.53 before you could access dollar number one of federal money.
We don't need it, fine.
Yeah, well, that's the point. We don't need it. Who cares?
Just because we're below the rates doesn't mean we have to raise rates to get...
Right. I'm simply saying for comparative reasons, if we're going to absorb it as a cost of doing business, we'll lose that amount of money to the processor.
Put it at your top and bill it to the customer. Don't handle it as a handling charge for the pleasure of doing business with me. Okay? Shane?
I just, I look at it as, we do need to cover the cost, but we need to figure out what the cost of Martha touching that card seven times is, plus the paper, plus the ink, figure out exactly how much that's going to cost and we can take it to the utility meeting. And say every time, every card that Martha touched costs her...
X.
Eight dollars. Every time she, every card she handles costs us eight bucks. There's 1,000 or 1,200 people that get cards. There you go. We're going to save $7,000. So there's offsets, and we just need to consider all those things as far as the rates go. I think we can do it on the rates that we have. We just need to figure out what those comparable costs are as far as moving in labor to the cost of doing business.
Zeke?
There was one more issue that was important in this discussion, and that is the demographic of the customer base. That it, we've encountered a great deal of resistance to people using the ACH billing method, even though it doesn't cost them any extra. And we have plenty of customers who are not using computers at all. So that, you know, that is a consideration. Sister Bay's average age is what?
65-plus.
Right. So you have, you have to bear that in mind as well. If you take away the possibility of receiving a billing card, which some people are used to and happy with, then you're going to have some problems with those people.
Okay. If I got this right, several of the board members voiced concerns about the $1 E checks and E savings fees, which must be paid to payment service network, as they do not believe it's fair to require customers to pay for a cost of doing business. The suggestion was made that the previously mentioned fees be absorbed by the utility and included in the rates so that applicable labor cost offsetting entries can be made.
One caveat with that, the monopoly is the utility. The customers don't have an option to switch to the water provider. It wasn't payment. We can pick any payment network that's there. But our customers don't have that option.
So is anyone something changed or is that okay?
Where it says the payment network is the monopoly is the utilities.
Okay. Be absorbed by, by who?
By utilities.
That's what I had, yeah. The suggestion was made that the previously mentioned fees be absorbed by the utility and included in the rate structure so that applicable labor cost offsetting entries can be made.
Yes.
That's right?
That's right.
All right. So then utility, refer it like this or you can refer a vote?
Oh, that's fine. Thank you.
So we're just going to refer it back. Consensus, refer it back to utility. Item number five, consider a motion to adopt ordinance 220-121-013 recreating section 62.1 to 62.28 of the utility code.
This is one that I inherited, and this was done based on action of the utility committee prior to me coming here. Essentially, Act 44, which was put in place in 2007 by the state of Wisconsin revised sections of 66.06.17 of the Wisconsin code. And as a consequence, we needed to take into account how we intend to expend the impact fees based on the timeline established by the state. So what this resolution does is extends that timeframe by an additional three-year period for those fees collected after April 10th, 2006. That's the gist of it.
So seven years becomes 10 years.
Yeah. The 10 years becomes 13 years.
Okay. Oh, within seven years, okay.
Yes.
10 becomes 13. Okay.
And this is off the suggestion of Steve, correct?
I think so.
Yes.
I think that was a discussion like three or four months ago.
The part of this is extending to pad or to 2015, the, for the water tower expansion.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If you all didn't pass this resolution, what you would need to do to be compliant with state codes, find a way to really fast to expense some money.
Or return the money.
Right. With interest, I believe.
If in 2015, we decide that we don't need a water tower, all those impact fees, are they going to be returned to the constituents?
That would be up to the wisdom of the board at that time if there were no other pressing needs inside the utility. Yes, sir.
Well, it would be required.
Certainly.
I think so.
It's either be used or given back.
Correct.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 275-121013 on water utility impact fees.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item number five, consider a motion to adopt ordinance 220-121-013 recreating sections 61, oh, we did that one, sorry. No, 62.28 of the utility.
Okay. This, again, is another item that I inherited. It's a cleanup of chapter 62. In majority, there were some instances where it were "and" should have been "the." So there was some grammar cleanup involved. The context of it that was changed in some substantial way, I've listed in the board report, and that's that 62.11 F2A2 has been modified.
For allow?
I apologize, John. Please disregard one of those. Am I correctly reading Nelson's grammar, apparently? Yeah, essentially, it used to read they had to have those grease traps cleaned out once a month, what it reads. Now, if there are substantial periods of inactivity, they don't have to have that done. The other one is that for private well testing, the sampling time between samples has been reduced from two weeks to one week.
Okay. So starting with grease traps for a month. Since I've been contacted by a number of people since we changed our ordinance. It says it has to be cleaned out or checked once a month. Correct? I hear from a number of restaurant owners who don't have or use any type of grease product whatsoever. They have them checked once a year, there's never anything in them. It costs money, it costs time, and it's expensive. You know, I don't know if you've ever been around a grease trap that's open inside of a restaurant, but it's also pretty smelly. Okay? And when there's nothing there, and there's consistently nothing there, why do we require somebody to continue to do that?
That grease trap is not effective then. Something has to be done with it. I mean, because I've checked mine once, maybe twice a month, and I have to have it pumped once or twice a month. Now, I know I'm a high-volume place, but if you're not catching grease out of a restaurant that produces biological matter and grease and synthetic matter, there's something wrong with your grease trap.
Right. Somebody forgot to hook up a pipe.
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about places that...
You're talking about a food handler, not a food preparer?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's what happens.
In other words, sub-express would be a handler putting together sandwiches, you're not doing frying.
That's an example. Okay? I've had mine checked three times in five years, there's never been anything in it. We don't put anything down.
Dave, my reading on this would be it says once per month, except...
That's what I'm referring to. There were a couple other people that approached me, too.
No, I know, I know. I'm just using that as an example. But I could understand that if you're not cooking with a grill type thing or using grease in your preparation of your food.
And there's nothing organic.
Well, or washing the dishes. You could be a handler, and if you're washing dishes that had a barbecue pork sandwich, now there's...
Or salad dressing.
Or salad dressing. There's oils and, so you don't, yeah, that's fine. No. Yeah.
Again, my reading on this would be once per month, except during periods in restaurants, food processing and similar facilities are not open for business. So a food handler would be a distinct entity separate from a food processing facility. What guidelines would we then consider putting in place for a food handling facility?
Well, I thought the ordinance that we recently passed said they had to be checked once a year and subsequently proven to the utilities whether they were checked or inspected. So either we ask to be once a year or it has to be monthly based on, we have two opposing ordinances, a code that is opposing what an ordinance says right now.
I thought the ordinance was more, because I asked, I brought this question up, who's going to come and check whether I check my trap or not? And they said it's, because it was one of these rules-on-top-of-rules things, it just makes no sense to me. The essence of it was for us, from Steve, it was something to hold people accountable, not that they're going to check it, but it's something if they needed to, they see an inordinate amount of grease coming from somebody, they have a way to enforce it. That was my understanding.
Yeah. So in a bill from a licensed plumber or, you know, decent cleaner would suffice for somebody in the last 12 months has checked it and you're, it's working and good, was the way we understood it.
Okay. But according to this code, it says it's on monthly.
But that's what I was talking about, that, the essence of that ordinance was that. Now, I'm not saying whether I agree with it.
Nobody's going to be coming, we don't anticipate anybody coming around and checking that. But if there was reason to believe that they're not using the grease trap, they could require to either come out and show us the grease trap or show us something that says somebody has checked the grease trap and it is doing what it's supposed to.
This distinction that you're talking about, it says that an employee or owner of the facility needs to check it once a month. It doesn't say it has to be inspected once a month. Is that the distinction there?
Well, where is it in here? Why don't we read what it says?
You know, so you, as a handler, if you know you've had people check it and you're fine, okay. If a problem were to exist, then, okay, now we need to check more regularly.
Thank you.
It's like a weeds ordinance. Say anything? It's a weeds ordinance.
That's right. But that's a, I think that's a proper analogy.
Yes. We talked about it.
Right.
We have too many weeds.
The way it, the way it says in section 2A, it says all interior grease interceptors must be inspected by the restaurant or food processing facility owner or authorized employee and cleaned at a minimum of once per month, except during periods. So it's not that it has to, you have to pay an external person to come and check it the way I'm reading that, unless it's down further.
That's the once a year, which is the code that says that.
Okay. So it doesn't, it doesn't require, is that what you were referring to? People are interpreting this as needing a plumber to come once a month?
Yes. What they're saying is, I mean...
That's not what it says here, though.
Okay. That's why we're talking about it. The question was, the question brought up to me was, why do I have to have it checked or have someone check it every month when I know it's not used for anything like that?
Yeah.
I mean, there are buildings that have grease traps in them that there's not restaurants, okay? That used to be a restaurant in the past, the grease trap is still there.
Yeah.
Okay? And we have something there, which I see tonight, that says if it's not used for a period of time, it doesn't have to be checked. Yada, yada, yada. But somebody, one of the individuals who asked about this, had a location that used to be used as a restaurant, has a grease trap in it, received the notice that the grease trap has to be inspected at least once per year.
They probably thought...
Yeah. Well, and I think if they came out the first time and understood that they're not utilizing the grease trap, unless something changes, they shouldn't have to go through again.
Is the trap in question interior or exterior?
Interior, I believe.
Okay. The way, if I could call your attention, do you see that distinction?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. So this, the way this reads to me is if you have an interior grease trap, you're not inspection, you're not liable for an annual inspection at all. It says exterior grease traps must be inspected and cleaned by a licensed plumber or hauler by May 1. It doesn't say about interior grease traps.
Well, the three people that talked to me would have interior grease traps.
Cool. Looks like employees are cleaning those bad boys.
I'm certain that they are. I'll let them know. Have their employees keep checking it on a regular basis.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
So we'll need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number six.
Is that going to be as amended because there was some dramatic provisions?
No, no, that was a multiple report.
Oh, oh.
Item number six, consider a motion to adopt resolution 277-121-013 sale of old school property. Zeke?
We have a two-minute recess. Recession was fun, but now it's over. Zeke?
Okay. What we're looking for this evening is a, to consider a motion to approve resolution 277-121-013, which approves the sale of two of the three properties to Mitch Larson as indicated on the map attached, the sheet behind that. The parcel that the school building is located on, and the parcel to the immediate south of that that is shaped as a triangle that abuts the other triangle-shaped parcel outlined in yellow. The sum of $400,000.
And we are talking about two of the parcels rather than three of the parcels that make up the entire. There are a couple issues to be cleared up paperwork-wise on the third parcel.
We'll bring that back at a later date.
So that third parcel will come back at a later date.
But that third parcel was all-inclusive in the $400,000 price he was paying us, was it not?
Correct.
Okay. So when we bring it up on a later date, there's not going to be any further transaction as far as money owed by...
Correct.
Okay.
Or it could be a dollar.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 277-121-013.
Second that motion. Any other discussion?
The only question that, whatever the issues are with the third one, that's not going to complicate the word, the resolution we're passing down, though.
I would prefer to continue to work ahead on this, and if there is some issue, I'll bring it back to you all at that time.
Then we can undo or reverse anything.
Yeah, you're not going to have a motion to sell it to him that's not saying that the sale is going to go through.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item number seven, consider new appointments to the tourism zone commission. We'd like to place the nomination of Zeke for the tourism zone commission to replace Chad Kadunko. I still, I'll let you know, I still have not been able to have a direct conversation with Chad, but we corresponded via email and via voicemail. He's out of town for at least another week. I don't want to wait another month. He's aware of what I'm going to do.
Okay. Need a motion for that or you're just doing it?
No, I'm making the motion.
Oh, got it.
But I'll need a second.
A second.
Thank you, Pam. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now your work really begins to...
Should stay on.
Review of the monthly financial statements, consideration of a motion to approve the monthly bills, approval of payments to do in order for work completed. Motion by Lino.
I'll second.
Questions, comments?
Got a question on page three of the Village. Jacobson Lawnmower Repair. Is that Steve Jacobson?
No, there's, that's a lawnmower brand name, I believe.
Oh, yeah. Right, right, right. Yeah, there is.
Okay. I just, I looked at, is this, are these utilities on a lawnmower that they're repairing?
It's part of the parks equipment.
And then on the same page at the bottom, my favorite subject, JJR beach expansion redesigning 78% for $800,000.
Seventy-eight percent of the prior contract, not, this is not new money that's being spent because of the bids coming in too high, this is-
Okay, then is there any, any threat about withholding payment because of where the bids came in until it comes up with another one?
I haven't seen the letter that Bob wrote.
John, I'm going to go back and review that contract to see if that would be possible, if it's a tactic we would want to discuss at that time. But I certainly agree with you that we would both try to blame as much as we can on those.
All right, that bill has not been paid yet, so if you-
I would like to make sure that, you know, if we hold it, find out if they're in compliance, if they've met their requirements under their contract before we pay it. If they've been leading us to believe the entire time that the project's going to come in at $700,000 and it came in at $1,005,000, it's not acceptable.
Well, there's certainly nothing wrong with holding it subject to seeing if they've met all the requirements. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
I have a question, page six. Till and Associates, so we having something done here, some consulting on the fire station?
The, starting, I think it was two years ago, the Fire Board asked would we increase the amount of the budget for maintenance of the fire station because the building is getting older and needs some more serious repairs on doors and other things. This year, the, that additional, it was an additional $15,000 a year. That money has not been spent yet, but Chris Hecht, Fire Chief Chris Hecht, sent us a letter asking us to pay this bill for Mike Till, who's going to apparently analyze what is needed.
He's going to go up on the roof and open it up to find out what's got to take place.
Just, just curiosity.
Anybody else on the village? How about on utilities?
I have a question on page two of the utilities, engineering stand pipe painting, what stand pipe, that's not the water tower, is it the hydrants or what is the stand pipe?
It's up by the old school. It's the-
They're called a stand pipe.
It's the first, it's called a stand pipe, it's really the first water tower that we had.
I didn't know if it was a tower or what they're doing.
Yeah, and this bill, the painting has been completed, but this bill came in rather late from Robert E. Lee and Associates, it's work they did prior to the painting and inspection of.
Anybody else on utilities?
Okay.
If that will take a vote based on altering the total amount by the JJR contract, no market has been paid yet.
May I point out one thing?
Please.
There is debt service on this particular list. This is the annual payment of principal and interest on the 2005 bonds and the marina amount is the final payment for the marina.
Good.
Other funds will continue to pay for a few more years if this one is finished.
Okay, great.
John, I'll sleep well tonight.
Yeah, I'll spend it tomorrow.
I won't spend it, don't you?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry on. Item nine, consider motion to adopt Resolution 278-121-013, amending the fiscal year 2013 budget. You're talking about this year, 2013, not the one we passed for 2014?
Correct.
Current year, and most of this is because of Cuffrin's resignation and subsequent work as interim administrator and consultant. And so I have calculated the money that we had left in the salary line item for under administration, the net of the savings on Cuffrin's wages minus the new administrators' wages. And I came up with these amounts for a total of a little over $30,000 and we need to move that money in the budget to show that we have money to pay for Cuffrin's services.
So we're moving it from one line item to another?
That is correct.
Okay.
The same is true of the parks budget, but this has to do with the street maintenance line item and we needed more money there. And every year, we divide the-
State aid.
Revenue, state aid revenue for roads between our CIP fund and our parks fund. And this year, that particular distribution of money didn't work out exactly right, so we need to move $5,000 there.
Somebody want to make a motion?
And this requires-
I'll make that motion.
This requires a two-thirds vote.
That was my next question, because it's-
Because it's amendment.
Amendment to our past budget. We have a motion by Pam, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John.
Any other discussion?
Don't let your motion die.
It's going down the tubes. It's at first.
Oh, gosh.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to go back to the previous item, we skipped one thing, or we missed one thing, and skip it because we're going back. Approval of payment to Dornor for work completed was a separate item on there.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion, any input from Zeke on that? We can say no.
I'm very glad we hired Donahue and Associates. They have stayed on top of Dornor and have held their feet to the fire in terms of the contract that was submitted. Dornor initially submitted a request for substantially more than this, even though the work had not been completed, it was partially completed. Donahue recommended that we not do that, so we're going ahead with a reduced payment amount. And I'm very pleased that that occurred as it did. So you're approving $286,509.30 to them.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry on. I'm quite sure that Zeke's enumeration of how great Donahue has nothing to do with the next line item. Consider a motion to approve a contract amount of Donahue, a line item, a design amount of $7,000.
So this was probably, when we originally signed with them, we weren't sure if we're going to do the lights, so this is additional to the original-
Scope of work. Yeah, as I recall-
You do that or we weren't sure?
We weren't sure how it was all going to work out with our credit with the state and whether we were going to go with the regular state included lights or whether we were going to do a separate village lighting system. And they, I remember them saying, Tammy saying at the time, if they had to come back with the plan, it wouldn't be that much additional dollars.
Tammy, you meet with us tomorrow prior to special meeting to go over some of the details with you, it's a $7,000 addition to the contract for that scope of work.
John, did you just say you wanted to make that motion?
Certainly.
I was waiting for Pam, though.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, well, there's this in front of me. Reporting county activities from County Supervisor Dave Lino. Couple of quick items, today was county board, this morning. We did approve at the county level, the compensation plan. That was, I think I'd mentioned it to you earlier in the spring, they were going through a compensation study. They went through and valued and evaluated position summaries, job descriptions for every position within the county, which is about 350 different positions. They started off with, I believe, a little over 200 actual job descriptions and position descriptions, and that's been narrowed down to about 135, 140. And each of those were categorized and put into pay grades, if you will. And Whiffly, Whiffly is the consulting group, did a study that included three other counties that were similar in size, similar personnel, similar activities and service levels. They also took a look at private business in the same county area, and they also looked at not-for-profits, these weight comparative analysis studies that are done. And then took and overlaid that on to the county employees by position and came back with the plan. They worked with the administration team of four individuals at the county for the past six months. Then we, the county then allowed those individuals who felt their position or positions were not correctly categorized or should be at different pay rates to appeal, and they were allowed to bring in additional information either from other counties or from those counties or private that would bolster their case to either raise or change their position description. There were 37 appeals out of the 357 employees. Of those, some were approved, some were denied, and some changed downward. Out of that 37, there was four that wanted to take it to the administrative committee for a further review. That was done about two weeks ago. Three of those were approved for some slight changes in the compensation plan and one of them was denied. So there was a very thorough vetting process of the whole compensation plan. I think I'd mentioned to you back in April or May when this was all getting started that this is probably a plan also that the village could use. It's public document, public record, it's available on the website, I've got hard copies of it. But it's a real simple methodology that they've come up with. I mean, it was very complex getting it all down, but pretty much there's a position description and everybody who falls in those positions, and there's a minimum, median, and a max. Okay? So the theory would be if you adopted that type of payroll plan, you would bring somebody in, they would start at the minimum, and over the years work themselves up. If they ever got to the max point, that's it, that's the max. So as a result, what the board adopted today was there was a, I believe, 10 individuals that were under the minimum, less than 85%, so the board approved raising them up to the minimum. And there was a number of people, I don't quote me the number, but there was a number of people that were over the max, 30, 40, 50 people over the max, and those people have been frozen. So no pay increases, no longevity increases, no further increase in their base compensation plan until such time as the market would catch up or positions, descriptions and compensation would catch up and change that. And that's what was adopted by the county board today. That was a really big thing to do, it's all a result of the Act 10, Governor's Walker Program over the two years ago. The county now, most of their representative employees will not be, no longer be representative or won't be representative for compensation purposes after December 31st. So the county had to put together all that, new plan to put in place starting January 1st for everybody going forward that's no longer represented. And that eliminated, for instance, 10 steps of pay plans. We used to start with the county and just, as longevity went, every year, two years or six months, you got an additional step, and there was 10 steps that you would just automatically get. And that was in addition to any cost of living raises that were given on annual basis or any changes to base compensation for your particular position. So it's now, all of those, that compensation plan has been set aside and the new compensation plan has been put in place and proved. John?
How does the village assist their base back up bases, your men, men, median, and max? Have you looked at that?
I have not looked at that. Today, today we got the final, the draft became final with the changes from the 37 appeals, which altered a few things, but I certainly will provide it to Julianne and to Zeke, and I have it electronically, I can forward it to you, you can open the website and pull it down. It's, I might even still have it with me.
John, I've, I've been skimming through that document, I've got it in my office and it's, it's a substantial amount of research that went into it, it's very thoughtful as to what they've done. And it's also interesting to see, which positions were substantially over the maximum.
I guess I will.
I would suspect we have quite a few of those options.
That are over?
That are over. But I'll just pass this around, and I pass this around, and what you'll see is, there's no names on any of these, it's positions, positions that they're speaking about. So you'll see, there'll be for-profit, there'll be not-for-profit, and there'll be county or state. And these are, these are the people that they got the information from, okay? And you can follow it across, what type of job it is, what the demographic is, you can follow all the way across, there's a median, a weighted, et cetera. But really what you want to go is this little box down here. This little box down here shows you the minimum, the midpoint, and the maximum for that position. So I started off this direction. And if you want to flip through those pages, there's a page there for all 200-plus positions.
You know, without looking at that and understanding one of those.
So it was very well detailed, and that's all summarized on one page. But that was a very long, arduous process for the county to go through. And that was the bulk of what was done today, so. But I bring it up, that one in particular, because I do believe it's some, it's a possible jumping off a starting point for the village to take a look at. We talked about putting an ad hoc committee together, moving forward, talked about personnel, finance, et cetera, early in 2014 to begin to look at our compensation plans, our benefit plans, et cetera, and get a jump on it, rather than, we always seem to be chasing our tails from August, September, October before budget to try and get it all figured out. And, let's see.
Will that ad hoc plan potentially address whether there's a need for any restructuring as well, committee of staff roles and-
Could be, we have a, I think next meeting, I'll have some conversations with Zeke, we'll try to put together, a conversation with some of you, try to put together an ad hoc committee to see what that committee could address or start to look at going forward for 2014. That's pretty much all I got for the county report for tonight.
Thank you.
We have a closed session, but we'll go into committee reports first. Is there any discussion regarding matters to be placed on a future agenda referred to committee official or employee at this point in time?
I have one item, and that is to begin as a board, I often rephrase that, to begin as individual officials to think about and goal setting, so that I have a consistent direction to provide to staff. Staff has a very good grasp of what their job is and what they're doing, however, which tasks are picking up or are taken up for activity or what I really need help on in terms of defining, for example, havoc out of the village hall. I understand that's an individual project that comes up, but we want to consider that in the broader context of what it is that we're going to do in that park. So just to begin to have that thought process on what goals we'd like to set for 2014 and 2015, to have staff direct their time towards. I'll bring that up at a subsequent meeting and we can do some deliberative.
Okay, good. I have a question for you, Janice, before we go to reports. On the download, is it in the order that it's listed here for?
It should be, yeah. I hope so.
I'm, I'm trying on Zoom to do this electronically tonight via the download. So the only thing I'm working on paper wise is I have a copy of the agenda.
Your desk looks very clean.
But now I'm trying to work out this, and so far, so good.
Well, our tech guy fixed ours.
We think, we think. The board might explore.
Okay, so do you know where you're at on it?
Yeah.
You should be at page 64.
I don't know what page it is, but, no, we're not-
Page is, right?
It says 13.
All right.
You're a little behind there, boys. Well, actually, we had to, we just, it's, the sequence is out.
This is the fat old guys over here.
You're sitting next to one another, we're in the middle.
All the old guys.
The sequence was out because we just had a report from Dave Lino.
Well, that was last, that was last month's minute.
Hey, we're all in hurt, can we proceed now?
Yeah, let's go.
Okay, administrative has not met. Day show oversight, the minutes are there from November 19th. Any questions on that? Close to byways.
Uh, minutes there from the November meeting up in Liberty Grove and questions, not much. Rather short meeting. Our interpreters from, Wassau didn't show up, so Stevens Point, excuse me, they weren't there. The second page today.
Interpreters?
Yeah, the interpretive.
For the China, China trip?
No, no, no. That's D C, D C. No, the, the gentleman for the interpretive plan draft and the kiosks. And also you'll see in there, second page, that we received a two-thirds reimbursement for the kiosk and, which is now sitting over in the Parks Building.
And keeping it warm and dry?
At least dry. I don't know about how. And we will be meeting Thursday again for the December meeting.
D C E C D.
Uh, the minutes from November eleventh, I reported last month, that had to do with the update of the China visit. Covered that one last month. And also in here is a executive committee meeting minutes where they approve for reelection, myself for next two years and Zeke for a year. And we had a meeting yesterday and we're in.
Do you want condolences or congratulations?
Uh, we're not sure yet. Uh, we did.
We had a lot of good bonding time on those trips.
It's only a year for Zeke in case he can't handle it.
Also, I had a presentation from Jerry Warwick, who is the president, CEO of Ministry Health Center, the hospital down there. What intrigued me about that was that York County Memorial is in the top five percent of rural hospitals nationwide. And these are rural, there's, there's a definition, but I was quite pleased to hear them.
Economic development has not met with a meeting in January. Finance completed all their great work last month. Fire. Minutes are in the packet. Questions? Fire District Exploratory. I did have a brief discussion with Ken Church, who was our representative on that about two weeks ago. They do continue to meet. They're expecting probably in the next couple of months to come back with something on Exploratory District again. I think it's at the point where everybody has to decide if they actually want to now do it.
Do it.
Put some money forward, start moving forward. Historical Society.
You have the minutes in here for both October and November. And the, in addition to those, the Historical Society is gearing up a little bit. First of all, there was a Christmas party. It was very well attended and it ranged in age from probably in the early fifties to almost ninety-nine years old. Christmas carols, they were in, it was in the older, the house, the main house, and it was full. And they ran out of eggnog and had to run to the, get more eggnog even. But they're also exploring, getting, hiring some paid docents in addition to the volunteers, so having some sort of a mix. They're looking at that. They're also in process that, well, there's a website, but in its, in its final stages of evolution, I think they're, and they're also working in marketing with the Go Guide now. And the next meeting won't be till February.
I see a note in here about anyone interested who could walk through the schoolhouse on Tuesday, October twenty-second. Anything to report on that?
I forgot the schoolhouse. Um, my understanding is they are going to wait and see until, they're going to try to contact Mitch. They're having a hard time contacting him. And I don't know whether I mean hard time in that it's.
It's difficult.
Mitch is.
He's traveling this time of year.
He's traveling a lot, yeah. And they want, they still want to explore whether, what it would cost, first, do they want to move it? Second, what it would cost? And third, then can they find some funding? And they're trying to juggle, determine the timing of that based on when they think Mitch might, you know, they'll need some lead time in order to do some fundraising if they want to do that. But there isn't any more movement subsequent.
Thank you. Anybody else? Library.
You'll see the minutes from last month's meeting in here. We met today and it was a nice quiet meeting, just going over bills, going over usage of library and just getting things together for next spring's garden opening. Nice quiet meeting.
On the review and approval of bills on the minutes in here, it shows split of Marina Fest sales. What's the split?
The split or the Marina Fest sales is.
No, I'm sorry, babe.
It's the book sales is, we split it fifty-fifty for the library committee and the group that volunteered. The group that volunteered happened to be the eighth grade trip, eighth grade class.
So the eighth grade class also got fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars?
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah.
Very nice of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy, for helping with that.
According to the Marina Fest, they were very pleased with that, the library. Were very pleased with the labor and everything that those students provided, so.
Worked out good.
Yeah.
Took a little motivation on my part to get my son over there and we were supposed to be there, but we're very appreciative that he was able to help.
Is it just a good gesture that they paid three-thirty-sixty-seven or, because if they just split that sale, oh, wait.
They split, but there's a little clause in there.
No, you take the three-thirty out of it and then, okay. Nothing, answer my question.
Marina and Marina Fest. Marina did not meet at Marina's Marina Fest since last meeting.
Since last meeting? Did we go? Yeah, we did. Okay. Haven't met.
Everybody knows Wendy had her baby.
The last minutes are Wednesday, November sixth. There's been a subsequent meeting since then. And the basic concept, the big thing to discuss at the last meeting, which was last week, what kind of running together, was getting T K H up and operating in an agreement signed with I E and Pacers, Brian Fitzgerald, and getting people hired to get things rolling.
And we shouldn't have any problem making ice.
No, there's actually ice out there now. But you can go out and skate if you want to.
Do I look like a skater?
You skater, is that one?
Rumball could use you. Put him in the goal.
Form a team right here.
Set up right there.
Don't move.
Plan Commission. Minutes. Minutes in the packet there, yep. Yep. In case you didn't have a chance to get to it, what we did at the last Plan Commission meeting was basically give Bio Tomato the okay. There was a subsequent Plan Commission hearing that briefly talked about officially mapped streets. And there's going to be another one talking about that again too on Thursday.
Right.
Communications Technology Committee has not met since the last meeting, but we're meeting Thursday.
Thursday. Admin building.
Yeah. All the Zooms are in place. We have thirteen.
I need to go through the second law that came in to make sure they all.
But we have, we have twelve of them.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, we have thirteen. No, twelve. This is thirteen.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
That's two-thirty.
Yes, ma'am.
So that means we'll be receiving them.
Well, that's what we're going to talk about, the committee, when we're going to roll it out. Janelle and who else was trained?
Larry.
Yeah. When Jill came up. Jill Loud, county clerk, and Tim Olman.
We just met, no training, but now Zeke and I kind of each own me, all use it.
Oh, so they, they came up and met and talked about the system.
Overall, I S stuff.
Okay.
There will be training later.
Yeah.
And Janelle has put together the last couple of Plan Commission meetings and downloaded them for anybody who wanted it. And she put together the Board of Trustees meeting and downloaded it. And that's what I've been using at the Plan Commission and this tonight. Glad to see where we're at. She's ninety-nine point nine percent there at the moment with little or no training, so she's on top of it.
These, these things are much easier to use than I anticipated. And I know this will change with time, but what we wanted to do was to get them all set up. I'll say I'll look the same as the initial when we got into them. If somebody got lost, we could tell it's a turn icon from the left and get everybody what they need to do. We'll discuss that real loud as well.
They're very easy to use.
Yeah, they're.
I'm on the right page.
And I can do it.
You can do it.
Okay. S B A A. Minutes from November seventh are in the packet. I had talked about that at the last board meeting. This past one, they had new board of elections. Wendy will continue to be the treasurer. The vice president is Jessica Grassi. And the new president will be Steve Gold from Going Garbage.
Really?
So it was. And when is that effective? This coming meeting, I'm, because they were, they were voted on and everything was approved after long discussion and really everything else kind of went through their, evolving their boards slightly where they are asking each board member to take responsibility for a festivity that is going on. And I think that's great because it's going to help Paige a lot, especially with the things that are going on. Their fourteen budget was approved and really, I don't know if I missed anything else notable.
You see Jesse, Jessica is the vice president?
Jessica Grassi is the vice president.
That's a good move.
And, oh goodness. He will be staying on with James Larson, I believe is his name? James Larson? Correct. James Larson will be staying on to help Jessica with membership. So they're going to continue to try to pull in more members and the non-traditional members as well. I have one thing. I noticed on, these are from November seventh, on line forty-three, Zeke Jackson, the new village administrator, stated that he is thrilled to be in Sister Bay. It's now a month later, but that's still hold.
I think that's a typo. Chill.
Chill.
To the bone, they messed that up.
As long as you guys keep getting snobby, I'm willing to be here. I'm scheming on how to get out to Hill Seventeen.
I just want to know what Natalie says tomorrow morning. You know about wanting to move to a cold climate?
Okay, moving right along. Team Center.
I've got one question. Item thirteen on the minutes, they talked about the insurance for this Go Bowl thing. I don't know if you're aware or not, but this group has their own insurance.
Go Bowl?
Yeah. Well, no, not the Go Bowl, this group that's doing.
Oh, the trail.
The trail. They have their own insurance. So they're bristling a little bit about having to pay the difference.
Yes, that's correct. They, they did come back with that. They talked to the insurance agent. This was something that was discussed this past meeting. And I think the consensus is not to support it at the present moment anyways until, and I forgot what the caveat was, even if there was a caveat, do you remember?
It's the insurance. Because if it's an athletic event, then the S B A's insurance doesn't cover it, so they have to give a special coverage.
Yes.
And that's why. Because there's different liability that comes in with sporting events, and say like a sale or a festival.
Which I assume the, there's treatment trail or thing, they have their own and that would cover it?
Well, they have to provide a copy of their coverage to Paige. Then she'll check with the insurance agent and see if they're sufficient.
So they're saying the laptop's worthless? No, no, no. Until the.
Insurance is cleared out.
The insurance is figured out. So it was basically tabled until, oh, okay.
But I talked to Amy and she says they have all the insurance they need. They don't need any insurance.
If you want to hand it to me, I can explain it.
Okay. I think it was just basically a lack of conversation, not for lack of trying, just for lack of not being able to communicate with Amy. Is that it?
That's it.
Team Center.
We had a meeting?
Hey, all right.
It was a good meeting, too. It was very nice. It was attended by their board members and also Y representative. We asked the Y for help, a reprieve for volunteers that are there all the time. We asked if they could open up the Y for like one night a month, charge a few, you have to, you know, encourage other people from other communities to go. They basically said no. It was an issue of money and turnout. Then I brought up, why can't we use Robbie Leclerc as a person and where are we going from that?
Just a, I guess, report back the other way. Parks took up the issue from a re-budgeting standpoint with Y funding and approved reallocating that two thousand dollars that was originally for Y programming into staffing. Subsequent to that, I have interviewed a candidate and had some conversation about bringing that individual on board. Because I'm not supposed to mention names in meetings.
Very good. Two more points with that. I did go and check out on the weekend, the kids that are there, it's really well-attended. And it depends on the person running the show that night, you know, where it's going to go. The kids that night when I was there, when Deb Anderson was there, it was just, the kids were doing what kids do. They were chilling out. Some of them were upstairs playing ball. And there was an adult there and it was a very nice time. And I would like to, still at this point, the Y wasn't getting, like what I wanted to say at the beginning, that we should partner with them like we do in the summertime for the kids, the smaller kids. Why can't we partner with them and do like a transient thing for older kids, like kids that are visiting, so mom and dad can go out, eat, offer programs like that and offer programs at different times, too? And the Y really wasn't receptive to that. So how can we, can we either write a letter to the Y or can we come up with something that we can offer programs?
One of the, I guess this would be an evolving conversation that we would have over at Parks on that. But one of the things that was discussed there was how the staff person that is performing counseling type activities in the Team Center would do is to engage in fundraising activities to enhance those incoming revenues associated with that program. And then we can look at how to expand that out from there.
And how does the insurance, I mean, like, let's say that, and this is a question, maybe I should just come to you and ask, like, how does the Y and the insurance during the day work? I mean, does their insurance cover stuff or because we are the village and we're in the village hall?
The Y insurance covers the Y for the programs they engage in. It's also while they are much more restrictive in how they want to engage in activities. For example, the things talked about at the Team Center board was the way we currently handle things is if a teen wants to leave and come back, they can do that under Y programming. They would not be able to leave once they were in the door, they were in the door. And that was because of how their insurance company wanted to treat that for liability reasons. So, yeah, I think it's, it's evolving conversation.
Okay. But it went well.
Tourism Zone probably has not met. Utility. Minutes are in the packet and sounds like we'll be discussing the online payment system again. I will also note on utility, I did today at about four-thirty this afternoon, receive a letter from John Lowery, Tom Chen, Liberty Grove, asking, not asking, letting us know that they are not ready to present their side of the story for the plant ownership issue at the fifteenth, December fifteenth? Sixteenth, next month. Meeting. Asking for some additional time.
I didn't tell you.
We, we obviously have not had time to respond. I'm going to contact John directly. In this letter, he explained that they've been pretty tied up in the budget issues that go down at Liberty Grove and haven't had time to put their piece together. So I'm going to have a conversation yet this week, the next couple of days, and decide after that conversation whether or not we will do something on the sixteenth or not. Okay? They're asking us to present our side again. It's already been presented and it's already been given to them more than once.
They've had it for months.
Right. So I'll have the discussion with John and then get back to utilities after. So F Y I.
We don't have a meeting on the sixteenth, though.
That's utilities. That's utilities, I would, uh. That's utilities out of it all.
Yeah.
So will that still take place? It just depends on your conversation.
Okay, that's it for that. One other item of note, Julianne included in our packet, a little note for our quarterly time sheets. Anybody have anything else under committee? If not, we will thank Laddie for his time and efforts here tonight. We're going to move to a closed session.